School board, special session for school board meeting October 6th and with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Him is absent, that is our only one tonight absent. I need an approval, a motion to approve the agenda. Salute.
Second.
Amy, Kurt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, next on our agenda is the appointment of the student school board representatives. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Francine Ganley and Ryder Schultz as student school board representatives. Salute. Ryan?
Second.
Russ? Alright, discussion. Mr. Stump, do you want to go or?
Yeah, I'll let you.
Okay. We had the privilege of interviewing
Eight.
Eight students last week. Amazing process. We have some of the coolest students that represent and that stepped up wanting to be a part of our student representatives. And it was hard to come down to two, but in the end we did come down to recommend Dean for the board's approval Francine Ganley and Ryder Schultz. So those are our recommendations to go down for approval tonight.
I think we'll talk a little bit more about our process in the next extra, next agenda item.
Well, Madam Chair, I see the paper's not here, but for the record, we have the greatest students in the western hemisphere along with the greatest school district. So it's no surprise that we have wonderful candidates.
Any questions? Questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And motion passed.
Ryder, give me Ryder's side look.
If you two would like to join us, up at the table. Congratulations.
And Madam Chair, I know this board knows Ryder. I, you, would you like to take a minute?
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Francine Ganley, I'm a senior at Peacock. Yeah.
Francine, you want to tell the board a little bit about some of the activities you're involved in inside school and outside school?
Um, I play tennis and I do track, I throw shot put and discus. And I'm part of our leadership council and also a part of interact and knowledge pool, as well as our student council. And I help with a lot of activities at my church as well.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the policy to 20 student school board representatives with the proposed revision.
Yeah, I can introduce this. As we were talking during the interviews, we at least are proposing to this board, this is not the first reading, the first reading will be October 20th, but just to get you thinking about or discussing. We have eight people, we have Ryder returning, but we did have a qualification there if there should be preference during the selection process to applicants who have not served. If this is an opportunity that more people can get involved in, or if we're okay with somebody serving for two or three years. I think last year the anomaly was we had three people apply and we decided to choose all three. And I think this year we went back to the board policy saying it says two in our policy. If we want more flexibility, we can definitely change it, but it does say two in our policy. And I think between myself and the board chair or panel and then Mr. Nelson is also on the committee, we feel like this is a good change to give more kids the opportunity to service student school board reps. Evidently, there's positives to saying somebody's on you for two or three years as well, or has that opportunity too.
So there's proposed revision in your notes. Again, this won't be on for the first reading until the next board meeting.
But if you have any feedback or agree?
You can do the same task too?
No.
Term limits.
Yeah. So if you have any feedback, we can take it now or if you can think about it and give us.
I think it's great we have these kids on our board, students, students at politics.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I second that, Kurt. Is there a process if we do, because I agree with giving more students this opportunity? Is there a process then where the previous student reps would coach the next year's student reps? Is that in the policy or is there a process in place?
It's not, but you know, for instance, these two are both seniors. And so likely won't be around next year, so I'm not sure how much coaching can be had in that case.
Any feedback or questions?
Do you two have feedback?
I don't know, I think the one-year position could be a good thing, just depending on the interest. Like last year we only had three people apply and Amelia was returning, so like it's not, oh, if there's not enough interest, it wouldn't really work. But if there's enough interest, I think the one-year would be a good thing.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I agree. I think this is a really good opportunity and I think there are so many students that are interested in leadership positions at our school. So I agree, I think if there's enough kids who want to do it, then it could be just a one-year.
It's a pretty good idea.
One more question, Madam Chair. Could we consider filling this position before the end of the school year so that our current student reps could coach the future student reps?
Catch them before they're gone?
To answer your question, yes, it's a possibility. I have just found May being extremely chaotic and busy and not necessarily interested in what's happening three or four months later in September. So that's why I think the policy may say in September or something, but we've tried to at least get up and running students acclimated and then fill into the position. But I'm, I think we're open at that, so.
Who else? Nothing else, we'll go on to the.
Madam Chair, so just to recap then, you're taking feedback now, you're going to come back with a proposed revision.
Yeah, it might say the same.
So it's like going to be a year term, whether or not to get mentored? I really like this idea of this one-year.
It is a one-year term.
Oh, it is, already, okay, I'm sorry, I can't read that.
Yeah, it is a one-year term, they have to reapply, it would just be that they would only do one.
Got it. It did say preference during the selection process would be given.
Perfect.
So they can reapply? They can, it would just be a preference of what, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, anything further? MCA data, the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report.
Carrie Marin, Director of Teaching and Learning, and then I guess she's joined by Mike O'Neill.
For Hatman.
For some science updates, but just as a big picture starts, we're just presenting the data tonight on October 20th is our next regularly scheduled school board meeting. That's when we'll dive into, so now what with the data and what's the building plans, what's the grade level plans? And so, and then we'll also go over Fastbridge data at the October 20th. We just didn't want a, here's all MCA data, here's all Fastbridge data, here's the goals and sort of overwhelm people. So we thought this is a first digestible chunk this way and then CIP goals as well as Fastbridge.
Mr. Stump, do you want questions to wait till the end?
I'll let the.
Carrie?
Maybe after each area?
Maybe, after each area.
Yeah.
Okay, I will just let you lead with a pause and then I'll.
Sure, and just, I'll just lay it out there that based on what he said, I can talk about how the data was collected and what the data is that we got from the state, but a lot of those precise, specific questions about why are you seeing trends or whatever, I think that the administrators will, you know, when they present on the 20th, we'll have more insight and some more verbiage around all of that. If that makes sense. So the first thing I'm going to present on was what we used to call the world's best workforce. They changed it last year, and I told you when I presented it at the beginning of last year that it would be changing. So we had to set a goal for comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. So the new name was about supporting students with academics and also how we were preparing them to be active members in the community after graduation. So it was not just the academic piece, but it was also who they are as a person and how we're preparing them to go out into the world. So some of the five goals that we have to talk about are children ready for school, racial and economic achievement gap between students are closed, students are college and career ready, they're graduating from school and we're preparing them to be lifelong learners. So here is the report, which is tiny, but the first part being, the first goal was that we were going to be, if I make it bigger, it'll go bigger up there, my old eyes, okay. Seventy-five percent of our students will be ready for school, for kindergarten. And so the, the numbers that we have listed here, we were supposed to maintain a seventy-five percent average proficiency. And we did meet that goal at seventy-seven point three percent with the number sense, letter recognition and patterning coming in with those three data points. Then we moved down to the opportunity gap. We don't report on racial gaps because our student size isn't large enough and so we aren't required by the state to report that. But we have the free and reduced gap between how students have free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced staff, students, sorry, how they perform. And so we are, obviously we're going for no gap. So last year our gap was eighteen, so it's, I can't see it all of a sudden.
Sixteen point nine for math.
You can see that with your.
Eighteen point six for reading.
Oh my gosh, I get a lot older than you, aren't I? And so we did not close that gap, but we reduced it down to thirteen point eight percent. So we're making progress towards that goal. The same goes for the reading, we reduce, the gap was eighteen point six. And we did not make that down to zero, but we are making progress, we reduced that gap to thirteen point one percent. So those are some really positive data, data points. Then we move into the special education gap. For special education for math and reading, we did not reduce the gap, in fact, we increased it. From twenty-six point two to twenty-nine point six, does that say twenty-nine point six? Okay, thank you. And for reading, we went forty-one point four, we increased it to forty-two point seven. So going in the wrong direction in that capacity. The college career readiness, hundred percent, well, graduate with the graduation plan, hundred percent of our students did. Our graduation rate was, our goal is to be greater than ninety percent and we were at ninety-two point eight percent. So we did meet that goal. And then this new, the new component was, it's a little less defined. So we, our goal was to cultivate curiosity and this intrinsic desire for students to learn and then just providing opportunities for students to explore other, other areas, other subjects through curriculums and extracurriculars. And that has been something that we have been working towards with more, more opportunities, greater access to different electives, extracurricular activities and just really providing opportunities where students can engage and look and try things to see if it's something that they're interested in. So yeah, and we're continuing to try to strengthen that internal motivation to learn by, you know, providing students time to grapple with things and not always providing answers right away. And so that's, trying to get them to realize that they're owners of their own learning, not just what teachers are giving to them.
Now it might be a good time to pause, is that, we'll give them the science next.
Questions?
No, I like the concept and I think that that's probably something we could utilize on a branding basis, that we are creating ownership of these educations for these students. I mean, that's, it's really the first time I've ever heard that, it's good.
Well, and I think that, yeah, that's, a lot of times schools done to kids and they, they're takers of information.
Right.
And we're prepared, we're trying to prepare students for a world where they can.
Right.
They can like understand why, they're, they're in charge.
It's a consistent message in my industry. I mean, we try to take possession and ownership of our relationships with our clients and our exercises and what we're trying to accomplish for them. So that's, it's a great, great concept. I, literally the first time I've heard that, it's good.
Anyone else? Questions?
Okay, so now this is why I have Mike up here, Mike, the former science teacher. So this year's test in science was the first time it was given, it's the new standards. And so in fact, the data wasn't even released until October 1st. So we've been waiting, 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 and it just was released on the 1st. So we're, we're all new looking at it, all of us all across the state that do this job are struggling to determine what does this mean? You can see on the left that statewide, they're twenty-five point nine, twenty-five point seven percent, I can read that. And we performed at twenty-nine point six percent. With a hundred and twenty-five students in the grades, five, eight and eleven on being proficient of the four hundred and twenty-three that were tested.
So you look at that in one, two ways, right? If I'm a college prof and I just ran an assessment and twenty-five percent of the kids passed, we would have, in our era, been curbing that assessment, right? And hoping for the adjusted grade. I appreciate the state of Minnesota not doing that, but that's also indicative of the major shift in pedagogy that is shifting from just spitting off facts in a sit and get environment, much like Marin was talking about, to shifting the area to an environment where you truly listen to a phenomena-based explanation and then try to piece together through your own findings, the why behind that, that scientific phenomenon. So I, I appreciate that we as a district performed above the state average, that's a great starting point. But I can assure you that, I know my middle school and high school PLCs have already dug into a conversation about wanting time on our October 20th PD day to wrap our minds around, this is our first glimpse of our students' performance on the standard, these standards. We have been aware of this shift for many years now, but now it's officially manifesting in front of our face. What is the transition of content, what is the transition of teaching style now truly look like? And how is it being asked in a question format?
I'd really like your example.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So you can see a decline by our students, but that decline is somewhat mirrored by the state. Just go ahead and advance the eighth grade side as well. And then also the high school side. So I appreciate that we're above the state average and as our teachers dive in, we hope that that decline goes the opposite direction, but only time will tell. And also it takes instructional shift. So here's an example. In the good old days, a teacher might have rolled into class today, this Monday morning, after an incredibly windy Sunday afternoon with gusts and the, you know, magnitude of forty-five miles per hour. And they would have sat and done a sit and get delivery of the why behind what we saw. That's traditional science delivery. Basically the sage on stage regurgitating all their background knowledge from their content area expertise and just getting it out to the kids as they feverishly took notes. Whereas the phenomena-based approach would be, what'd you notice yesterday? Let's start there. I noticed all the pine needles clogging up my driveway or my gutters last night, hmm, I wonder why? Why were they, why were they falling, why were the leaves all of a sudden gone? And all these baited questions that get to an inquiry modeled by the kids so that they ultimately put the pieces of the picture together and maybe end up in a roundabout journey to the fact that we had a high-pressure change and a cold front and a frontal boundary that was right on the edge of the Midwest yesterday. All those things that would have been delivered in a five-minute bell ringer is now a more drawn-out and like a higher-order thinking process for the students. That takes a dramatic shift in pedagogy, it takes a dramatic shift in scope and sequence. And that, I chose an easy one, weather. Can you imagine doing that in the world of chemistry? So it's, it's a tall task and it's reflective in low performance by the state. But we're on it and working on it.
So that's science. Questions?
Madam Chair?
While Mike is still here.
Yes, sir. Question. So. It, the, the fifth grade science and the eighth grade science especially, I mean, eighth grade, we were at eighteen point four percent and last year we were at forty-two point one percent, so it's been cut in less than half. So I understand that that's what the state has put out to us, but I mean, even in your example, it sounds like it's taking a lot longer to get anywhere with the kids. I mean.
Possibly, but the, the end product is a higher-order, more independent thought journey as opposed to just, I, I think there's a lot of rote memorization in the discipline of science over time. So kids that play school well would, even all the way down to med terms and things like that, where kids just memorize things and regurgitated for a test and moved on to different content, this is a completely different experience. But yeah, I, I know that Mr. Engman for sure is a champion of wanting to collaborate vertically about where, where we need to be better. I mean, he's the one that started the conversation with me, which I appreciate.
Have you seen what this test looks like? Because the way that you are like describing how this new, you know, approach is, I can't even imagine what, how they're asking questions.
You know, that might be like a work session in the future, just looking at MCA item samplers.
Yeah.
So we, the closest thing that the state provided was an item sampler page, test nav or test go, I can't remember the official title. It's true, you can find it on the NBE page. But yeah, we, we, through professional development opportunities, we dabbled in what this was going to look like.
All year.
Yep, actually more than a year, right?
Yeah.
So it, it's not something that caught us completely off guard, but definitely a work in progress.
Mr. Neil, is it kind of a, an assumption, I guess, now that you know what it looks like, that's where the teachers are diving in and wanting to take their personal development, professional development into
Yeah.
what areas that they need to guide the students better on?
So they, they also were faced with having to teach a transition, transition of what they used to teach in standards to the new standards and live in a world of overlap for a while, which was difficult too. But then again, every eighth grade teacher had to do that throughout the state if they've been there the previous years.
And we'll remind the board, the new science standards were just last year or have they been out for two years now?
They've been adopted for twenty.
Two, is it two years?
But we had a new curriculum shift.
I don't remember the exact date.
The new curriculum was two years ago.
And then this, yeah, this last spring was the first time that kids laid eyes on a next-gen science standard MCA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so here's our math data. We, the state average was forty-two point six and we performed at forty-eight point five percent with four hundred and forty-nine students testing on proficient out of the nine hundred and twenty-six that took the test. So here's our third grade data. And our, oops, and our fourth grade. And the fifth grade. Sixth grade, you see that we're, we have come and gone up past the state in sixth grade. And seventh grade, which was where we saw significant growth. Eighth grade. And then eleventh grade. It's a lot of data to digest. Questions?
Questions?
You see nine hundred and some participants? Is there any, is that pretty, pretty equal throughout the grades that were tested? In a hundred to hundred, hundred, or was there any, to give a group that was larger than any other?
I don't have, I don't have that. So there was just, because not all the grades test, so.
That's what I'm getting at, so.
Right, so some of those grades don't test.
Okay.
Right, so like they don't start testing until third grade.
Okay.
And they test through eighth grade and then one more time in eleventh.
Got it. Thank you. I think I'm good with what my question is.
Madam Chair, I got two things. I did tell Mariah, there is a testing one, two, three website that you can look up, you know, test questions I can send it to the board if you want. There's a bunch of information, if you want to see what's a fifth grade science exam.
Parents have access to that?
It's on the books, yeah. I don't know if we've ever sent it out, but the other quick reminder is that again, if a student doesn't want to take the test, doesn't finish the test or opts out, it counts as a zero for the district, which is the same for all, you can say it for all the state, but that is the reality.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is this, we have not yet implemented the new math that we've been working on, correct?
So that, so this next year, the twenty-sixth school year is when we do the new, wait, what's the question? The due assessment or the curriculum?
We haven't implemented the new math.
The math curriculum.
No, so this is the year of the curriculum review and so we will purchase that this summer for implementation next year.
Hopefully we'll see an increase.
So to, do you mind if I jump in?
No, please do.
To this point, to answer your question, like in this case, seventh grade though, we did work with our curriculum and tried to align it better to the standards, even though we didn't purchase another curriculum. The same can be true, I believe, a little bit with sixth grade last year. And we're continuing that work this year to ensure that our curriculum aligns better to the rigor and what students are asked on in assessment.
And the scope and sequence, in a way that.
So between that and a lot of work on interventions and more time curriculum, I think. We, even though we're a year away, we are hoping to see better results or planning to see better results through Fastbridge and MCA testing even this year.
Is there, do we have any idea, it looks like fifth grade math we've struggled with for many years. It looks like we are always behind the state, which is kind of odd for us because it looks like most of the time we're a little bit trending above the state. Do we have any idea why? Is that because they're going into the middle school, do we think, and it's like a big shock to them?
So these are the things that I, that I know. That, that seems to be, from the people that I talk to, it's like when I go to the curriculum leader meetings and whatnot, it seems to be that the dip happens oftentimes in a school whenever they make that shift. So like I was talking to Pillager and I think they make their shift in sixth grade, is that true? I can't remember, but it's whenever they leave the elementary, so like we're seeing those, that's what, part of what the shift is. It's different, they get less math minutes, which is something that Mike's been working on at the middle level to add more math minutes to try and help that. And also the concepts get harder in fifth, that shift from fourth grade to fifth grade is, it's much more conceptual. It's much, it's not just facts, it's more word problems, it's a lot more of that until the, the math is harder in fifth grade. But I think math minutes is really a big part of it.
Any more questions on that?
Okay, and then the last one is reading. You can see that the state performed at forty-seven point six percent and in Peacock we performed at sixty point seven percent. We had five hundred and seventy-three students of the nine hundred and forty-four that tested that were proficient. So last year, the state lost point two and we lost point three, same. We followed the trend of the same difference. So here's the third grade reading. We're red. And the fourth grade. Showed some really big growth. Fifth grade. Sixth grade. Seven. Eight. And ten. That's the reading data.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Why do they do tenth grade when it's eleventh grade for math?
They try and, they try to spread it out so they're not all testing on one grade level. And then the science, when they take it, it's the year that they take biology, is that correct, Mr. O'Neill? The year they take biology. And here that tends, that's what grade?
Ten.
Ten. It's different in different schools. It's different in different schools.
Ms. Moran, there's a very interesting, we've got some really good data there on a couple of those grades in the middle. So it looks that, you know, we might have a struggle in third grade, but then it's been really good. And then it started to dip down again, which is an interesting. Is it again, a product of harder reading?
It's it's longer passages, it's more multi, so the vocabulary is is greater and so. And we just know like so, and I think I've talked to you a little bit about the the Read Act Phase Two. And the the next components that were required legislatively to do to attack, which is. Students in fourth grade and above that scored below grade level are mandated, I hate the word mandated, but we're we're we're. We have to provide them another assessment, which is the CAPD, CAPD basics. No one's ever used it, at least in our, most people in Minnesota have never used it. But it's the assessment that they chose to help us dig down into what is getting in the way of these students being on grade level. And then we're required to provide intervention. So it's a little cart before horse in this because Phase Two teachers haven't been haven't been trained. So we have, I took the approach of not giving this assessment in the fall. Because we did what our messaging was this year as we gave the assessment, I messaged it to all the teachers and they told the students that. If you if you perform below grade level on the FastBridge in fourth through twelfth grade. And you will be needing to take another assessment for intervention. And so I think that did help some to not just click through the test. But it also helped me look through how many students are below grade level so I could order licenses for this assessment. Because we're going to, the FastBridge opens again in December, we're giving it before winter break, which is not how we've usually done it, I guess. But we want to be able to reorganize intervention groups and whatnot for second semester. And so we also then will be giving that CAPD assessment for the first time. We had, we were given by the legislation, we were told we had until February to give that assessment, we're going to give it in January. Also, kind of exciting is that our high school ELA teachers are very interested in what they can do. For intervention in their classes, which is really amazing because they don't have any training on the science of reading. But they're really interested in, so their PLC goals this year are how can we. Understand the FastBridge data better and then how do we provide intervention in our classes? And so Belinda Ryer are, you know, we changed the instructional coach roles a little bit to be more math, science and and literacy, social studies. Not excluding other subjects, but Belinda Ryer is going to be, has been working with them as they've been looking at data. And really trying to determine like, because we know what to do, we know what to do to fill the gaps. But time is hard in a high school setting to provide those interventions. And so I'm super excited about how the high school teachers are wanting to engage in that, as are the middle school. So we know that there's these reading gaps for students that end up getting in the way in a lot of things for them. As the as they get higher up in the grades and the vocabulary gets much more dense. So we're in exciting times and I'm I'm pumped about where we're where we are and what we're doing.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
And this is probably not really reflecting the changes that we've made with the science of reading, correct? Because they were getting taught and trained and we haven't really implemented it at this point.
And we had brand new, we had brand new curriculum last year at the elementary level. So there's that implementation of a new curriculum, well, all of them, all of ELA had new curriculum resources last year for the first time, so.
I mean, just with my own kid, I've seen a lot of growth in reading, so I'm not as worried about our reading. I think we are really heading in a good direction.
It helps when the state champions it.
Yeah, I bet. My my biggest concern, and this is with all schools, this is with our whole state, is that, you know, if we have twenty-nine point six percent proficiency in science. And forty-eight point five percent proficiency in math and sixty point seven percent proficiency in rate in reading. But then we have a ninety-two point eight percent graduation rate. That to me sounds like we're graduating a lot of kids that are not academically ready to be out in the real world.
Well, there's a lot of things that go into being successful as a student and a and a human, right? So this is one dipstick in time. So it matters and it holds weight, but it's it's one piece of the big puzzle.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trump.
Um I'm going to make an assumption here, but I'm going to guess this is all tested by screens, not physical books. In the in the testing process.
For the most part, there are some students that have accommodations where they have large printer.
Okay, and it and it so and they're given enough time or can you admit, okay?
Plenty of time, it's not time, so they take as long as they need to take the assessment.
Got it, and then the biggest issue is do our parents know how these tests are conducted? With the process.
I can say that, yes.
Again, it doesn't matter what I think or how I understand it, it matters the people that are watching our meeting tonight. And those people that have students that are being tested, do they understand how that test is conducted? And is it, and and I've had this debate with my mother and my aunt who are both consume books by the day, multiple, I mean, they're really good. And I've had debates with them about, do we like the Kindle, do we like, is there, well, you and I have been talking. You know, but what is the benefit of turning a page versus swipe on the screen? We can talk about that later, I'm not asking for that tonight, I'm just.
And Kurt, as a parent, we can say we we received our child's MCA scores just this past week.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't know that, yeah.
Yep.
Got it, thank you.
Kind of on a bigger picture, and this might be a lot that comes out next week or at our next meeting as well, because I think we're getting some more detail with FastBridge and stuff. But here's where my concern lies, and I think several of board members too, is this is all public data, it's public facing. They don't get the opportunity per se to come in here and dig in. We need some kind of tool, reference sheet, that kind of gives some maybe bigger explanation into these deeper dives that we get to hear more of. And maybe give us some help when we are confronted with, why is your district at twenty-nine, you know, that's scary to people when they don't understand all of this.
Well, we want to provide the opportunity, Madam Chair, don't we, I mean, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, so if there's something where, you know, maybe it's in our next newsletter, we're somehow able to help address these questions with parents or like. For further information, click here or something, I don't even know what that would look like.
FAQ?
But.
Yeah.
Something to be able to help our constituents. Understand that it's not as scary as it looks.
Well, can we ask our students real quick, what do you what do you guys think? Is there a lot of parents from students out there that are curious about how these tests are going or is everybody pretty much got it under control? What do you think?
I feel like, to be completely honest, not a lot of students care about their MCA test score.
That's honesty, thank you.
I hate to say it, but yeah, and I think like now looking at test scores, would it make sense if we like kind of got like maybe MCAs more about like. If we kind of correlated it with like getting ready for the ACT, like this is how testing works, maybe more students would care about it.
We could do a better job, huh?
Maybe that.
No, you can be honest.
I don't think it's anything adults are doing, I think actually, especially like in the younger grades, we take MCA scores really seriously. But like as a high school student, I think the care about caring about our MCA's goes down, other than extra credit you might get. Because it's like, well, I care about my GPA, this is what's going to be for college and there are so many other stresses with classes, so.
I think what really does well is the incentivizing, I think Ms. Klein does a really good job with that. With our star test, for example, if you get a certain score or improve your score, you get extra credit. And that's what drives a lot of kids to do better, so it's about incentivizing, do you get on your MCA, you get this.
Are you dabbing on that?
Well, because, but also then that I'm not, yes, but also we're trying to work on intrinsic motivation to.
Yeah.
Right, I'm not second guessing what you're saying, I'm just saying like, and also, right?
But Mr. Stump, you said something that I think really impacts this is like the zeros. Our constituents don't understand that.
Yeah, and so I a couple of points. I hear what you're saying, right. I would say the science, you made a comparison between one between last year and this year is like cut in half. And I think it's two vastly different tests and so it's good, that's a tough comparison to make just because we're measuring completely different things. As far as math goes, Minnesota has their own set of math standards, unlike any other, you know, place, it's not the Common Core, it's not other things, which is good and bad, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. But then finding curriculum to have an exact match to Minnesota's standards, which is not just the standards, it's the vocabulary. And it's how questions are asked, is a challenge, I'll say as a former math teacher. And so I think that's why you saw the major growth in seventh grade because we did. Work with another school on on exact curriculum that matched the standards perfectly. That was actually not written by a textbook company, that was the work of other teachers. So I think there's an, I'm not excusing the data, but I think it's not that our students are not smart or don't achieve math skills. I think that our curriculum isn't necessarily aligned to standards and how questions are being asked on MCA. So I I'm excited, our our math teachers have dug in with some math leadership and and worked through that, so I'm excited about the curriculum review process. But I know even when we purchase a curriculum, it's not going to be directly aligned to math standards because we're the only, you know, state with these specific math standards. We sort of stand in a role to it, there's still going to have to be some work after that to align and to prepare students to perform math.
And our age old debate, and also work on the pedagogy of how the new standards, what they're asking students. Sort of like the similar shifts with the science. And so we're asking students to approach math differently as we're asking students.
So it's a bit of a moving target.
Always, yeah, but but it's good stuff because what we really want our kids to do is not just kind of like regurgitate, like Mike said, facts back. Or whatever, we want them to think about problem solving, so they can be problem solvers in the real world.
Completely agree with that.
I can measure that. So and I'm not just basing it off this, I've heard from a lot of business owners that, you know, they're also concerned because they have young people that are graduating. And they're coming into their businesses and they're not able to do what they think is simple math. You know, they're not, like my husband's job, he couldn't figure out his per diem. And my husband had to walk him through, okay, how many days did you wait, you work, how much is the per diem? You have to multiply it, like he couldn't grasp that. And I'm seeing that, I'm hearing that a lot in the community. And I think there are certain things that you do, for instance, I think you have to memorize your multiplication. Because you're going to need that in other things, so that is something that I think you have to memorize, which I know we have gotten away from memorization. But the kids that don't have it memorized, when they get higher up in math, they struggle very hard. I mean, it's infractions, it's in it's in everything, so there, I think there are some things that you do just kind of have to memorize.
Yeah, your garage door code.
Huh?
Your garage door code.
Yeah. Your garage door code.
Would you like to share yours?
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I do have some questions back up to the comprehensive and civic readiness, if we're ready to go back there. Okay, so the gaps, very interested in learning more, will we get more information about the gaps in our meeting in a couple of weeks? October twenty-second, like we're tracking gaps between free and reduced paid lunch and not and sped and non-sped. Do we track that information just internally, like the gaps with all populations here at Pequot Lake Schools?
All populations and what, are you talking like racial equity or racial disparities or whatever? We don't, we're not required to.
Right.
It's a valid question.
I can take the, I can maybe jump in for this one. This is a really hard one because our teachers can't even know who's on pre-introduced lunch, so that is private data. So it it's hard to say, we're closing that when we can't necessarily identify that kid needs additional support. So what you end up finding is usually strategies that are good for students who struggle, no matter, you know, if they're in on an IEP or if they're pre-introduced, doesn't really matter. Strategies that are good for students that struggle are good for most students anyway, so. And I I think, so that answer, that might answer your question about tracking and whatever else that, you know, really, we're just trying instructional strategies that benefit our students. And you can see, I I do think we have some work to do on curriculum for special education students. And what additional supports that they need in both math and reading areas specifically. So what does Tier Two, if if the core isn't working for them, how can we do the core and more and not just replace with something else? So I think that is one of the areas that we're trying to address this year, at least for sure in math, I know in reading.
Yeah, we've been, that is some of the work we've been working on, yes.
And TSS. Okay. Another question, so we we're at ninety-two point eight percent with graduation rate, right, in twenty twenty-four? So for twenty-five, twenty-six, our goal is ninety percent or greater. Are there, is there a reason why we're not seeing like ninety-four percent or greater?
I can take this one too, if you want. Is there a reason, no, I mean, we can put whatever we want on it, the fact is, we were higher than ninety-two point eight last year. We had, like the state will come back after the data is released saying, here's the eight or ten students that didn't meet the standards when, and then me and Mr. Nelson look at them like, oh. Those students actually graduated on time, they were with us for all four years, but they counted against our graduation rate, but there's nothing you can do with that data afterwards. And we had two students like transfer from us as sophomores that counted against our graduation rate, so. I'm just telling you, I don't put a lot of weight into what you see there because that's not representative of the students that were with us for four years and their actual graduation rate. Because the state has different formulas and different ways of counting it, so.
Yes, we've talked about that before.
So I don't actually put a lot of weight, I'm sorry, and maybe Mr. Nelson does, I don't put a lot of weight in that number.
And we don't track just our.
We do, and we can act, we actually do, and we could actually put what, how many students, whatever you want to say, started their senior year and finished or started their freshman year and finished, however you want to do it.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
I tell you, it's much easier to present data after being here for a year than when I had just started and presenting stuff. Much easier this time.
Next on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with EML teachers regarding salary Schedule C for middle school basketball.
Don't move.
Thank you. Motion by Kurt, second by Dina. Um Mr. Stump, do you want to?
I can, you you approved this MOU last year, again, Schedule C, the junior high positions are based on starting in November, ending in end of February. And what worked out last year is half seasons, and so this just clarifies that and it's a two-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement, and we can address the next contract negotiations.
So this is the same exact, the rest as what we've already done last year?
Except for it's a two-year, yep.
Okay, um so we need a motion to approve the memorandum, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh next is our school year calendar preview.
Yep, again, this is not an action item tonight, this is just a FYI, you saw, hopefully saw emails that went out to staff and then families to give us feedback on the calendar. I just looked, as of tonight, we had eighty staff give us feedback and two hundred and sixty-six families submit feedback.
I feel like that's a lot of response, Seth.
Yeah, it's 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 good response, and to be honest with you, in looking through the families, in particular, there was. Most, majority of them didn't have any comments, but if they had comments, I would say, I don't know, I hate to say, well, thirty people had comments and of those fifteen were like, hey, just thanks for giving us the opportunity to share our input with this. So it's open till Friday, Mr. Nelson and I are meeting with the student leadership team to get their input. As opposed to have, explain this all and information and whatever else we thought, we'd just meet with those thirty to forty high school students on the leadership team and get feedback from them. on the leadership team and get feedback from them. Uh, and I can go into this if you want and sort of explain the differences, or maybe you read it and you're all good, so I'll, I'll.
Does anybody have any questions, are we good to? Yep.
I do, I really like the idea that we sent it out to everyone to get their opinion.
Yeah, typically, it, it sort of is what it is, so we've typically just surveyed our staff, but in this case, when we talk about, you know, spring break or modified spring break or a little bit of adjustments from the normal, we thought it'd be important, this might be ongoing as we move forward in the next couple of years, but that was something new this year.
Okay. Um, next then is our resolution on accepting donations and grants. And it looks like we just have one on here today, a grant from Region Five Development Commission for twenty thousand dollars designated for the energy efficiency funding, and Heidi, is this?
Yeah, if you wanna get a motion in a second, then, um, Heidi can actually talk.
Sorry.
Nope, it's all good.
We have, we have donations too, don't we?
This, this is a, we'll, we'll explain.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you for a second, thank you. Okay, Heidi.
All right, so the EECBG grant is actually an energy efficiency and conservation block grant that Region Five Development Commission was awarded by the government and in lieu, Region Five then brought to our attention that we might be eligible for a maximum of twenty thousand dollars to help support energy efficiency, renewable energy, climate resiliency, items that we're actually already in process of and have plans to do with our bond reference. So we applied for the maximum of twenty thousand dollars, submitted the application and were awarded the twenty thousand dollar grant. It's a reimbursement grant that we report out our expenses over the next several months and then we'll be reimbursed for those energy efficient expenses, the majority of which ATS and R are involved in and will support us through this process. And tonight, the final component of being granted that money is to have the board acknowledge and approve it.
So to answer Kurt's question, so thi- this is a little bit out of the norm, we would accept this donation, you know, normally at our regularly scheduled board meeting. We can't start accessing the funds for this grant until it's approved by the board, so we thought, let's just have this as a separate engine, agenda item right now. And then we have to show the board notes with the signatures, and so we just thought, get the process started now.
Is it federal or state grant? Combination.
It is.
Doesn't matter, we don't.
Department of Commerce, Minnesota Department of Commerce, State.
Thank you. Good job, Region Five.
Any other questions? Board? If no other questions, then we have to take a roll call vote. Kim is exit, Mariah?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Dina?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Can I go aye? Motion carries.
Good job, that's a nice chunk of money.
Thank you, Heidi, your work.
We'll, to close the meeting first, I think.
We're done with Heidi?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so next is a closed session for the superintendent's bill setting, so I need a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of superintendent's bill setting pursuant to Minnesota State Section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A. So moved, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Keep bringing twenty grand a month or a.